Ready? Ready? Good evening. Welcome to West Covina City Council Meeting. Today is August 4th, and right now it's about 7:02. We're two minutes late. But anyway, tonight, our invocation will be led by Pastor Samuel Martinez Amazing Love Ministry, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilwoman Shoemaker. All rise, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Heavenly Father, in this time of crisis in our country more than ever, we need your help, your guidance, and your direction. Heavenly Father, remembering the words of King Solomon, the Jewish King of all, who said that wisdom is the principal thing, we need your wisdom, we need your guidance and direction, and we humbly ask, Father, for it. Now, Heavenly Father, I bless our city. Father, there's anyone in our city, Father, that has suffered the death of a loved one, Father, through this crisis. Father, we pray that you comfort them. We speak health, Father, over every resident in our city. We bless our businesses, Father. Help those that are unemployed. And Heavenly Father, we speak the protection of your angels over our first responders, our police officers, and our nurses and doctors, Father, strengthen them. Father, we thank you for the freedoms that we have in America. Help us, Heavenly Father. Guide us and give us direction, Father, in all the affairs of our city. And I bless now West Covina. The Lord bless you and keep you. The Lord make his face shine upon you. Lift up his countenance upon you and grant you his shalom, peace. God bless America and God bless West Covina, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Jessica, go ahead.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Perfectly. Go ahead.
Okay, perfect. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jessica. Have a seat, please. Assistant City Clerk, Rocko, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilman Castellanos?
Here.
Councilman John King?
Here.
Councilmember Shumian?
Here.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado?
Present.
Mayor Wu?
Here. And City Attorney, do you have anything to report out?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
One call session?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, now we move on to presentation. City Manager, I want to make sure we live, right? Because we're over there still showing the pictures. We live, okay? Hello? It's okay? Okay, tonight, the first presentation, we want to recognize one of our local virgin and small business, and he is fighting so hard to keep his business. I think your business is 40 years in West Covina, right? And we're so proud to have you. Not only, not only, he tried to, okay, make his business continue to survive during this pandemic, but also, he did a lot of charity work. And not only that, a couple, I think a couple days ago, Channel 7 interviewed you regarding, let's play ball, let's watch the ballgame. And you did, okay, put West Covina on the map. So we want to thank you. And now here, I want to introduce our small business, Anna's Pizza and Joey Masuko, right?
Mark Crusoe.
Mark Crusoe, sounds like Japanese, okay? I know you are Italian, right?
Correct.
Well, you can be Italian, you can be Japanese, but we don't care. We love you, no matter what. Would you please come out with your wife? So Joey, you want to say something about how you, okay, as inspiration for a lot of business, never give up and always fighting for the business, for the patron, for enjoying not only your pizza, but also continue to help our community? Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, guys. How are you? Anna's Pizza's been in West Covina for over 40 years. I'm the third-generation owner that gets to call West Covina home. When the pandemic hit, we really didn't know what was going to happen. Nobody really knew what day-to-day life was going to be like. Nobody really knew what business was going to be like. And we just figured out that it was all going to come down to how bad you want it. And we were lucky enough to be considered essential. And I took that word very seriously. I took essential very seriously. It means that your city needs you to keep going and to move forward and to be there for other people and help as many people as you can. And so we just wanted to make sure that we were there for our city the same way that they've been there for us so many times. It's just, it's been a crazy ride. If you would have told me five months ago, I'd be standing up here and, you know, hanging out with all you guys and, you know, still surviving.
And without masks.
With our masks, yeah. It just, I just can't say thank you enough to everybody that's supported myself, my family, my wife. I mean, we're a pizza shop, but we've become so much bigger than pizza. We've got to wrap our arms around a community, and they've given it to us right back. And we can't say thank you enough to the people of West Covina. And as far as the small business goes, we understood very early on that you can't do it alone. And, you know, everybody needs a little help. So myself and some other local business owners are starting a, you know, a little business association, a West Covina Business Association, to try to help other small businesses that need it, to try to just kind of be there for people. If they have questions, we can all ask them together. If they need help, we can all come together and support them too. So, you know, thank you guys very much for all your continued love and support, and I can't say thank you guys enough. It means the world to me that we have you guys as our customers, and we're very honored to be your pizzeria.
Thank you, Joey. I think we should have a video clip for you, right, regarding your, okay, and from the Channel 7, and the interview that put us on the map regarding the West Covina Anna Pizza, and including, okay, how they say this is the first day, they play ball, the Dodger game, and then you have a Dodger nine. And so we want to show the people how creative you are, okay, and try to, okay, create during this pandemic. Okay, see right over here? Okay, and this is how during the nighttime, people with a social distance, okay, and then you utilize outdoor dining for people. We all comply with the county health department. As you can see, people enjoying the ballgame, and you put a big screen TV, okay, and a projector over there, so people can enjoy it. And do we have a Channel 7 clip? Do we have Channel 7 clip, that interview about Joey and Anna Pizza? If we don't, it's okay, maybe copyright issue, but we, copyright issue, but we can post on our, okay, website later on. But this is so important for you. Look at how many people you create, okay, and with social distance. And I remember I went the second time, the second ballgame. I show up, and then your invitation, and we met so many of our neighbor, and people are very happy because this is something they feel safe. At the same time, have their family, okay, enjoying the square, and we have enjoying the pizza and the ballgame. But I want to thank Joey to continue to create. And wife, you want to say something?
No, just thank you, Mayor Wu, for having us, and I'm so proud of him and all the work he's been doing, and thank you to West Covina for being part of it, and you guys are like family to us. So we can't wait to see everybody there soon.
Yeah, thank you, and we are so fortunate to have you, okay, as one of our amenities, so important, have you continue to serve our community and for people to very proud living in West Covina, where small businesses continue struggling, and we are trying to do everything, including our CPG fund, including any promotion, and people sit outside on the street, okay, on the curb, and if people can, so the restaurant can operate their business. We really, okay, city want to help them. And I want to thank you and set up the West Covina Business Association to help possible studying, revitalize our downtown, and to try to help them, that we are willing to, we own the land, okay, over there, to maybe help them, that we can block, okay, the parking, okay, for them to utilize as outdoor dining, and I think that then in that way, they can survive. We want the business to survive. But thank you so much, okay, for your dedication and service in our city for 40 years. The third generation. Tell me, who can be less? So here, we represent the West Covina City. We have a certificate to Anna Pizza, and we want to thank you for your dedication and contribution for our city, for our community. But thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Want to say more? No. Thank you. Joey, thank you so much again. Thank you. Sorry, I cannot hold your hand. I cannot give you a hand, okay? But really appreciate, thank you, okay? Okay. Okay, next presentation is regarding, again, about our senior meal program. And here, due to the pandemic, okay, and the city, and have to serve our senior resident for 150 to senior center up to 550 per day. Basically, we have to serve and deliver 550 food for our needed, okay, our senior in need. And even some of them is not our senior resident, some of them is person, they need help, they sick, but they have immune system issue. City willing to step up, okay, to help them. So right now, we serve 550 from Monday to Thursday. We want to provide continue for this senior, but due to the county and the city, the budget issue with this pandemic, and then we got an issue about the budget, and we asking for adopt our senior meal, emergency meal program. And right away, we have a lot of people in our community step up and to help. And today, I want to thank, okay, and our Chinese-American Association in West Covina, they bring in, I want to see a president, would you could come up? Okay, James Su, right? Am I right? You with your mask. Let me check you, can I check your ID? Okay, maybe I have to pack you down, I'm sorry, okay? So I want to thank, okay, CAWC, Chinese-American, okay, Association, West Covina, and to donate, what, $200,000? No, $2,000, okay? So I'm getting, oh, my eye cannot see anything, but $2,000 fund, okay, West Covina, Chinese Association, our resident, our neighbors, okay? And Jess, you want to say something? But thank you so much for the sponsorship.
Thank you. My honorable Mayor Tony Wu, and also all the city councils. Yeah, this year is tough year. So facing the coronavirus, I think we can only have, can do two things. One is a prayer to the Lord Jesus. And the second is, no matter what kind of color of our skin, we work together as one family. So this is our great honor to be here on behalf of the Chinese-American Association of West Covina, to do this small donation at this tough time, and I believe, you know, let's pray together to the Lord, and I think we will survive, and we work together again as a one family. Thank you, and may God bless West Covina, and may God bless all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Okay, it's good job. And you know, I want to thank CAWC, Chinese-American Association in West Covina, had to sponsor a lot of program. I remember studying with shop local after-school program, and you go with our children parade program, you go to senior, okay, went to check with their well-being, okay? I think you done, you got done a lot. That's why we need it, because you are one of us, one of our community member, and it's important to, not only to be a neighbor, but when people need help, you willing to step up and to help. And the Chinese-American Association, the one of the biggest, okay, contribution is during the March and April, when we have no mask. And you guys are step up, and with all your member, help out a lot of donation for mask, and that's how our city has a lot of resident has a free mask. And it's basically from a lot of your member, okay, and they sponsor and donate, okay, N95 to the hospital, the Protective Guild to the, okay, Queensville Valley, and then a lot of mask, okay, and to our senior center for them to give away, okay, to our resident from first senior then to all the resident for so long. And people even wondering, holy micro, why we have so many mask? Because we have so many love, okay, neighbors willing to sponsor, and we have 40, 50 members, okay, and different group that donate all those PPE to our community, to hospital, okay, and to our resident. That's why, okay, I want to represent West Covina, all the members, 120,000 resident, to really thank you. You guys are really, okay, do the major contribution to help our city during the pandemic, now even willing to donate money to help our senior. So I want to thank you so much, and here, represent West Covina, okay, we have a certificate for, and you have all the member want to come in? Okay, you have mask, don't worry, okay? I have mask too. No, it's okay. Let's go ahead. Okay, anybody want to say something quickly? No? Yes, no? No? Want to come in? Okay, come on. And who is the real check? Good? Okay, thank you so much. Thank you. And who is my real check? Do you want to receive the checks? Mark, you want to reach to come? Okay, and you want the picture with real check?
All right. Real check.
I don't need the fake one. We already have a fake one. I want the real check. Oh, $2,000. Thank you very much. Want to take pictures? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, guys, okay? I see you maybe next month to get another 2,000, okay? I push my luck, okay? Bye, but thank you so much, okay? All the seniors, thank you, okay? Really appreciate.
Thank you guys.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And next one, I want to call Dario. You want to come up? Where's your mask? And I, okay, see? See, we're not here to only receive the donation. One of our city council member, he, okay, he want to donate to our senior meal program too, okay? And, okay, this is his first check. He told me maybe he want to save the money monthly to donate the money, okay? So am I pushing my luck? Okay, go ahead, Dario.
No, you're not pushing your luck. In fact, I'd like to encourage more of our residents to do the same in light of all the financial difficulties we had in our city and our unions stepping up to help out. I wanted to do this to help our seniors and also demonstrate that I'm doing a little bit in the way I can. So hopefully, our seniors are doing fine, and hopefully this inspires other people to continue to look out for our seniors. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And who is the, who is the check?
Oh, it's already cashed, I'm pretty sure.
He already donated money?
It's already gone.
Are you sure he already donated the money?
I'm positive.
Okay, here's, okay, I want to represent West Covina to, okay, present a certificate for you. I don't, I don't think you need it, but hey, what the heck? Okay, we just give you another certificate, okay, and for you. But, but, since Dario donated $500, as the mayor, I want to follow his footsteps and give $500 to manage your donation too.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so anyway, grab this. And Mark, you want to come out to accept, okay, my donation, $500 for senior meal program? Okay, so? I know, I don't have a little bit check, but I have a real. I know I have a real check. Okay, Mark, come in, okay, accept this check. Okay, see my signature right there? Show it to my, okay, good.
That is the mayor's signature.
Okay, good.
One, two, three, four.
Okay, thank you so much. But we want to, we want to encourage, okay, more people, okay, to sponsor our, okay, senior emergency meal program, because you save a lot of life, and I think our senior deserve, okay, this sponsorship to make sure their well-being. So I want to thank, okay, all these donor, and I want to encourage people, if you want to adopt senior, please, okay, and go to our, okay, city website and help our senior. So thank you so much, and thank you, Joey. Okay, okay, wish you all the luck, okay, continue to do a good job. Okay, appreciate, okay? Thank you so much. Yep, before I, before I move on to overall communication, okay, I want to have a adjourned motion, okay, and in the memory of one of very beloved school principal, okay, I think this is something, is very sad story and a very sad news to us, to myself, because, okay, and, okay, this happened, okay, adjourned today meeting in honor of Mr. Christopher Andretti, okay, nickname is Mr. A, principal of Christ Lutheran School, okay, in West Covina. Both of my children, okay, Megan and Justin, okay, all from preschool to junior high and move on to South Hill High School, and they basically have this wonderful school with all this so-called religion, with all this kind of imprint to their early belief. And our this principal, okay, he basically provided a very good program and education for the student. Mr. A left us on July 22nd, 2020, after a very difficult and courageous battle with a brain cancer, okay? And this magnificent Mr. A was called home to be with the Lord Jesus Christ, and he will be absolutely deeply missed dearly. Okay, so I want to, our Assistant City Clerk, would you please make a note, and plus, and our city will send a condolence to their family, and quickly before I, okay, and he was here in 2019, when I, okay, saw in as a mayor, and he show up, represent the Christ Lutheran Church, okay, and present a certificate, if you remember him, he's a tall and a very handsome, okay, young guy, okay, as a principal of Christ Lutheran Church School. And I'm so honored for him to present, okay, that certificate to me, and plus, in 2018, he present the Citizen of the Year, okay, from the Christ Lutheran Church School, and say, I'm so honored to call him as a good friend, and I'm really, very sad for his passing, okay, due to such a young age. So I want to have deepest condolence to his family, and I hope, okay, people will remember this outstanding educator and really help our student, our community. Okay, thank you so much. Again, now we move on to overall communication, and Assistant City Clerk, how many caller we have today?
Good evening, Mayor. We have 16 callers.
Okay, 16 caller?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, before we start?
Go ahead.
I, I know, I do, I would like to hear, I know, our council, they agree on something, they may not agree. I'd like to hear the email thread, but I understand where we going from there, but I just want to make it, put it on record that I'd like to hear the email thread.
Okay, I think we can have a city attorney or city manager to address, okay? I think, okay, for the people, okay, and maybe, okay, right now, due to the pandemic, we have this issue, but I think maybe, okay, maybe city attorney or city manager can address this about why, okay, do we have any city where we read the email? Because we already received the email, we got a copy, and I don't think, okay, do we need to read aloud? Because supposedly, we have people to show in person to address to council, they can use email to address, to send to us, or they can show up in person, but due to pandemic, so we changing to, okay, either, okay, of calling or email. So go ahead, who want to answer this question?
Yeah, just real quickly, Mr. Mayor, on our agenda, we, on our notice, we said you have to send in your email by 3 o'clock, and that email will be posted on our website and provided to the council members. It will not be read tonight. And they also have the option of calling in tonight and addressing the city council. So you've provided two avenues for them to communicate with you tonight.
So maybe city manager can address why we doing this? Can we bring the resident, okay, back, okay, in person? So since we in person conduct the public meeting, can we have our resident come back, okay, and we just do social distance with mask, so they can address any their concern?
Yes, Mayor and Council, good evening. Our city has been dealing quite constantly with the pandemic since the situation first began in March, and I'm quite proud of the municipal organization. One of the aspects that affected our municipal operation in recent weeks has been the pandemic has hit our workforce. We've had five positive cases within our police department, our front-line public safety people, we've had a couple cases at city hall. And county health, who we work with quite closely and have a great deal of respect for, considers that level of an outbreak among essential workers, disaster workers, municipal workers, to be an outbreak. So when it became classified as an outbreak, it became immediately necessary to again shut down our police department lobby in our city hall and to not allow the public in here. We hope to receive a clearance by the end of this week, by Friday of this week, and if that is in fact the case, we intend to reopen these chambers with proper masking and social distancing to the public at your next council meeting. We miss being able to have the people, public in these chambers, and in the meantime, are honoring their rights of free speech by accepting letters, which will certainly be read by the council, although not read aloud this evening, as we understand. And then also through the phone calls, people are welcome to call in, and that'll be the portion of the agenda we get to just next.
Okay, very good. Thank you, city manager. So go ahead, okay, Assistant City Clerk, can we go to the first speaker and let them identify their name, okay, and let them start, okay, address to council? Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have approximately 16 callers. If you'll give me a minute, I'll be able to put them all through.
Yeah, go ahead.
One at a time.
Okay, no problem.
One moment, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first speaker is going to be Ms. Angie Gillingham, followed by Mr. Brian Jopps, followed by Mr. Brian Tabata.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, Angie.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Council, I wish to speak on censorship. Censorship is the suppression of speech, public communication, or other information.
Angie, give me one moment, okay?
Okay.
Give me one moment, Angie. This is Assistant City Clerk Lisa Sharick. One moment.
No problem.
Thank you.
Can we, can we use the microphone to work to the, your speaker? So in that way, so we can hear? Can we do that?
I will check, Mayor.
Can we just the mic, so in that way?
Okay, Angie?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Okay, I will speak again, again. Council, I wish to speak on censorship. Censorship is the suppression of speech, public communication, or other information on the basis of such material is objectionable, harmful, sensitive, or inconvenient. On Tuesday, July 21st, council meeting, you wield your power to suppress the many residents who continue to be opposed on the development at the BKK and the other-- and the other, and the only company this council wishes to engage with. We were told that 200 emails, 280 emails were all the same. I assume meaning they all wanted this council to not extend the contract. I am flattered to know that the contents of my email were the same as Brian Jopps, Mike Miller, and the Sierra Club, and many others. But we were not heard. Your continued behavior of ignoring the residents is being seen by more and more residents and will not favor any of you in the near or distant future. I will end with a quote from the respected Representative John Dingell. Remember, elected officials do not have powers. They hold power in trust for the people who elected them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Angie. Next, please.
Mr. Brian Jopps, followed by Brian Tabat Tabai, followed by Caroline.
Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, Lisa. Are we good to go?
We are good to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Brian Jopps, the 31-year resident of West Covina. At the July 21st city council meeting, you refused to hear public comments, and you broke a nearly four-year-old promise. You received hundreds of email public comments in opposition to the sale of public lands at the BKK landfills. You chose not to read them aloud for the residents of our community to hear, not for you to read, for the residents of our community to hear. In doing so, you silenced our voices, and you violated your own policy on public participation. Instead, you voted for the land sale and did so without council discussion. It has been said that censorship is the child of fear and the father of ignorance. Please, please stop moving down that road. Also, at the last city council meeting, you broke a nearly four-year-old promise. Since late 2016, the city council has repeatedly promised that no sale of public lands at BKK would occur until a full environmental impact review had been completed and a development agreement was enforced. Instead, you voted to remove those protections, and again, did so without any council discussion. Now, you continue to tell us, don't worry, the regulators won't allow anything to be built at BKK unless it is safe to do so. This demonstrates that you are completely aware that you are the local enforcement agency. You are the LEA. What that means is the city of West Covina is the local regulator, charged by the state of California for ensuring the public health and safety at BKK. Instead, what we hear from our mayor is, quote, "Give us our money," unquote. I urge you to individually start creating a legacy of public service that demonstrates courage and integrity. I choose to believe each of you are still capable of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, next, please.
Thank you, Mr. Jopps. Mr. Brian Tabat Tabai, followed by Caroline, followed by Emmy Lou. Go ahead, Brian.
Good, uh, thank you, Lisa. Good evening, Council. I'd like to begin by acknowledging that the land we inhabit today was the stolen home of the Gabberlino Tonga people, the original stewards of this land. This land, the land that surrounds us, is much more than what is in front of our eyes. This land is fertile with the voices, voices that have long been hidden, voices long denied, voices that powerful systems attempted to erase. In 2016, my young family made the decision to set our roots in West Covina. We chose West Covina because of its schools, its beautiful neighborhoods, and vibrant community. But as I became active in local politics, I found myself questioning whether our city council is acting in the best interest of our great community. I saw a council making decisions behind closed doors, a council not explaining their decisions to residents, a council ignoring residents' comments, and a council censoring legitimate concerns from the public. We have a city council that routinely shows a willingness to sacrifice our city's budget and our valuable land for political expediency and electoral victory. It is clear that this council does not represent us. Us, us residents. Us residents who were forced to use social media to pressure the opening of the chambers in July. Us residents who had over 200 of our emails censored. Us residents who had to post our own words online to show that citizens of West Covina had been denied their voice and not outside agitators, as this council falsely claimed. Us residents who had to have our comments ready by 3:00 p.m. as opposed to the previous 6:00 p.m. Us residents who will no longer have our emails read, but instead placed on the website, which has been plagued with broken links. During the pandemic, where trust and outreach by our local leaders is needed more than ever, this council has made the decision to retreat, to bunker down, to script accountability and exclude the people of West Covina from our chamber. In closing, I am reminded of the infamous election night quote. "I used to complain about not having the majority behind me, and now I got my wish," Wu said. "The full responsibility is on our shoulders now." That quote's wrong. We, the residents of West Covina, are not behind you. We are out here in front of you, demanding the return of our voices to the chamber, because to erase our voices is to surrender your responsibility.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, next, please.
Thank you, Brian. Caroline, followed by Emmy Lou, followed by Mr. Naranjo.
Good evening, city council and city, uh, West Covina residents. My name is Caroline Salinas. I have lived in West Covina my whole life. I'm commenting today along with many other concerned community members, first to condemn the censorship of 300 public comments via email at the last city council meeting. The fact that the censorship happened is an embarrassment to our cities. Every email should have been read. Those responsible, including Mayor Wu, who encouraged it, should know that it was absolutely unacceptable. Every voice must be heard. Those people would have shown up in person if they could. The Zoom system also being used today is complicated and a huge obstacle for those who aren't as tech savvy. That includes our seniors, who should also be involved in what is going on. I also want to let you know that the West Covina community is against the plan to develop on the BKK landfill. Please put people before profit. By moving forward with Singpoli, you are signing off to contaminate our neighborhoods by developing on a toxic landfill that will put the health of West Covina families at risk. Singpoli's project will be a huge loss to taxpayers of a city already in much debt. It will bring much traffic congestion, noise, pollution, and could increase the risk of public safety. You were elected to do better than the previous councils. We trusted you to do so. The people elected you to do what is best for the residents, not private developers. Our city is home to California's largest toxic hazardous waste landfill. The state's largest, not a great thing to say out loud. You know this situation is bad when even the California Department of Toxic Substances Control has told the city directly that this project is an ongoing public health threat. Before the shutdown, I joined community members in speaking with local families about the development plan. These families were eager to mobilize to ensure that the health and safety of their families would not be put at risk if you move forward with Singpoli's plan. Not everyone is able to be civically engaged, so you must value your leadership position and use your moral compass to do what is best for all residents. It is the residents who in the end will have the biggest price to pay for the misuse of this dangerous landfill. You have the power to create some good moving forward if you put an end to this. Community members have offered great alternatives that I fully support, including a solar power generation facility that would benefit several San Yves Valley communities. Please end this development. The residents know what is best for their own community. Listen to them, do not silence their voices. Let's work together in creating a better alternative to benefit the health and sustainability of our beautiful city. Thank you for your time. Please listen to we the voters.
Thank you, Caroline. Next, please.
Thank you, Caroline. Emmy Lou, followed by Mr. Naranjo, followed by Ms. Avila.
Hi, good evening, city council members. My name is Emmy Lou. I'm a resident of West Covina. I'm calling today to ask that you do not approve the 2020 Justice Assistance Grant application, nor adopt Resolution Number 202086, which would give the police department $17,856. Sorry, $17,856. The police department already takes up 47% of our city's budget, with only 9% of their department's budget going to materials and services. The police department should reallocate their funds from their salaries and benefits if they need upgrading materials and services. They should not receive any more funding to improve state sanctioned violence against our own communities. George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and countless others have been brutally murdered by the police. We do not want more money for an institution that consistently criminalizes and kills black people. We do not need more money for policing, which is a reactive tool of justice. Rather, we seek a future that invests in community services, that innovate preventive measures, and programs to actually address the root of criminal behavior. If you do pass Resolution Number 202086 and approve the application for the Justice Alliance Grant, please consider appropriating those funds to other programs endorsed by the Justice Alliance Grant, which include prevention and education programs, corrections and community correction programs, drug treatment and mental health programs. We have the Hope, Halo, and Met teams that could direct these funds to empower and uplift our homeless community members from lifestyles that lead them to criminal behavior. So again, please do not approve the application nor the resolution. Please consider reinvesting in our communities and not the police. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Amelia. Okay, can you reset the time? Okay, so, for next one. Okay, next, next speaker, please.
Yes, our next speaker is Mr. Naranjo, followed by Ms. Avila, followed by Steve Bennett.
Yes, hello. Hi, my name's Edgar Daranco. I'm a resident of West Covina for 22 years now. And first, I would like to start off by thanking council members for giving me this opportunity to speak. So I would like to note the blatant disregard of the residents' opinion on the BKK site. There were more than 200 emails sent to the city of West Covina, and only four were read in the meeting regarding the BKK site. All council members were voted in by the residents of our city. We had faith in the people that we voted in to represent their districts accordingly. A 4 to 1 vote does not represent the residents of West Covina. I will give credit where credit is due for Councilmember Lloyd Johnson for voting against construction on the BKK site. Moreover, this location has over 190 acres of toxic waste. We really do not know what type of ramifications this will have for the city of West Covina in the future. From my point of view, I only see this construction being beneficial to the more affluent classes of our society. Also, the fact that you guys are changing the way that public comments are received, so you guys can't hear what people are really thinking, is just pathetic. I yield my time. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. And next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Ms. Avila, followed by Steve Bennett, followed by Ms. Bridget Ramirez.
Thank you. My name is Minerva Avila. I am a West Covina resident. I live in District 4, which is represented by Councilman Castellanos. Thank you. My name is Minerva Avila. I am a West Covina resident. I live in District 4. On July 21st, you received 280 comments asking you to vote against the extension of the purchase and sale agreement with Singpoli. You received zero public comments asking you to vote in favor. You received zero public comments asking you to vote in favor. What did you do? You censored all but four public comments. You didn't discuss the issue despite those 280 comments. You voted in favor of the extension on the consent calendar despite those 280 comments. The message you sent residents was clear. You don't care what people have to say about the agreement with Singpoli. Not only did you refuse to listen to what we have to say, you refused to give us an explanation as to why you voted in favor. All the, all the excuses you have stated have been that exclusive, because what you have done has been consistent with what, with your behavior when it comes to Singpoli. You wanted to, you have, you want to silence residents. You've tried to silence me before. You once tried to cut my BKK comments short by attempting to remove me from the podium during oral communication. When a group of residents and I distributed BKK postcards at a city concert to raise awareness about the proposed development, you scrambled trying to find a reason to stop us. You couldn't find one. You claim you will listen to residents. You held city workshops on the Singpoli development. Residents attended, and we told you that we didn't want a hotel up there. What did Singpoli do? Returned with a revised plan that included an even larger hotel than what was originally proposed. On July 21st, you, your attempts to silence criticism of the Singpoli development on the BKK site reached its highest point. You went straight to censorship. I submitted a public comment with the understanding that it would be read aloud during the period allotted to oral communication. It was not. My comments, along with hundreds of other comments, were censored by this city council. I have asked for an explanation as to why this took place. Councilman Castellanos, you have said nothing, as usual. Mayor Wu, for someone who has been quick to throw out the First Amendment in the past, as if you were an expert, you have been noticeably silent. Both of you did not reply to my email. Clearly, you don't care that you violated the freedom of speech of West Covina residents. You don't see anything wrong with what you've done. Mayor Pretend Lopez Viado, you did reply, and you stated that, I quote, "We lumped them together because it said the same thing," unquote. Mine did not say the same thing. I spent time trying to figure out which of the many concerns with the Singpoli development I would highlight in my statement. Your reasoning for not reading public comments, simply because they address the same subject, makes no sense. What's next? Will you lump all public comments together because they pertain to a city issue? Any issue? Then read the three or four you favor? That logic makes no sense. You know what makes sense? Voting against the extension when 280 people asked you to. You know what makes sense? Voting against the agreement because not one resident, not one resident, asked you to vote in favor. On the contrary, 280 asked you to vote against it. I emailed a public comment believing that my comment was going to be read aloud. If I had known that email public comments would no longer be read, then I would have called, I would have made plans to call in. On July 21st, you changed the city's policy and practice of reading email comments without proper notification to residents. And you did so because you did not like the criticism of BKK development. In making that change, you violated my First Amendment right and the First Amendment right of all those whose public comments you did not read. Resent your vote on the agreement until public comments are heard properly and an appropriate council discussion takes place. Do better. Listen to the residents. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Mr. Steve Bennett, followed by Bridget Ramirez, followed by Yusuf Arifin.
Good evening, council and city staff. My name is Steve Bennett, a lifelong resident of the city of West Covina. Tonight, I once again come before you to fight the First Amendment rights of the residents of the city of West Covina. I woke up this morning, and I looked at the calendar just to make sure it is not Groundhog Day. As you obviously know, it's not. However, it seems this city council came to the last council meeting only to be scared by their shadows, and here we are with several weeks of censorship by this council and this city manager. It was only a couple of meetings ago that this city council heard from a West Covina fire captain about the possibility of questionable dealings happening here in the city. It was the following meeting when the city attempted to stifle public comments by posting in the city council agenda that council comments, public comments, sorry, submitted by email would not be read aloud during that council meeting. We heard Mayor Wu at that next council meeting say he supports the First Amendment and quickly reversed the decision to only hear public comments by phone or in person. But just one meeting after that reversal, we have yet another 180-degree turn from this city council and the city manager. At the last meeting on July 21st, hundreds of emails were censored and not read aloud during the council meeting. The city manager said they were virtually the same letter. However, as many people quickly found out, the only thing that was virtually the same was the opposition to the real estate deal with Singpoli, which I might add was quickly approved with a 4-1 vote on the consent calendar with nearly no discussion on the topic. This real estate deal is something that this city council does not want to have any opposition to and wants to prevent comments to that point. In fact, one letter from a resident that was read aloud alluded to a possible business relationship between the mayor and Singpoli. Mayor Wu quickly called it a racist because the owners of, at Singpoli and Mayor Wu were of similar ethnic backgrounds. However, the fact is that people are questioning the business relationship simply because Singpoli and Mayor Wu are both in the real estate business. At no time was there any insinuation of racial concerns in those comments. Mr. Wu, you owe that resident an apology letter. This council has five members, and not one person stood up to Mayor Wu about his blatant disregard for the First Amendment and his disrespect for a resident that was questioning something many people in West Covina have questioned openly on social media and during something many people in West Covina have questioned openly on social media and during previous council meetings. We need council members who are willing to stand up to Mayor Wu and fight for the free speech that this country was founded on. Just because this council does not like the comments does not mean they should be silenced. Public comments are exactly that, comments from the public. If you do not want to hear them, then you should not have put your name on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Ms. Bridgette Ramirez, followed by Yusuf Arifin, followed by Daniel Luna.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you.
Great. My name is Bridgette Ramirez, and I am a West Covina resident. In this time of a pandemic and budget cuts, I am troubled by the financial priority and attention that this city has given to the police department. As of January 7, 2020, police leadership are among the top five highest-paid staff members of the city. The police chief is paid more than even the city manager. A police officer makes more than twice what a victim advocate or a community services officer makes. Meanwhile, memorandum of understanding between the city and the West Covina Police Management Association stipulates a reopening period that would allow the police to negotiate for even higher compensation later on. Compensating and providing health care and retirement benefits to the police members isn't necessarily bad, but I don't understand why. Comparatively, they are paid so much higher than those in social and community services, in some cases astronomically higher. According to the West Covina Police Department's own statistics, mental health incidents increased by 30% since 2017, and contacts and arrests with the homeless population have also increased for the last three years. The police should not have to bear the responsibility of addressing mental health, homelessness, and victim advocacy and care in addition to everything else that they do. We should be paying the people who know how to do this work and who have the training for it. Additionally, according to the WCPD statistics, in 2019, Hispanic people accounted for 73% of arrest fees, even though they only account for 53% of the city's population. Practices that over-police and target specific communities for arrests can breed feeling of distrust in police, making people less likely to call for services. Overpolicing can create the negative effect of punitive militaristic policing, which is especially dangerous in communities of color. At the same time, the WCPD is seeking approval to apply for a justice assistance grant for, quote, "cartridges and batteries for non-lethal weapons and investigation tools that retrieve digital and cell phone data," end quote. In a time when our country is reckoning with police violence against black and brown people as well as against protesters, I am uneasy about funding more weapons for my city's police department. What do they mean by non-lethal? Furthermore, why do they want to retrieve digital and cell phone data? Whose data is this? What will they use it for? I want to see more transparency around this grant application and what are the practices and goals of the police department. I do not say this out of hatred for the police or to condemn those in the department who genuinely want to make West Covina a better, safer place. I say this to question whether we, as a community and as a city, are going about it the right and effective way, and whether our funding can be more equitable for those who serve and are being served in our area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Bridgette. Our next speaker is Mr. Yusuf Arifin, followed by Daniel Luna.
Good evening.
Sorry. Hello, my name is Yusuf Arifin. I'm a lifelong resident in West Covina in District 3. The last city council meeting, the city council censored close to 70 distinct emails regarding the extension of the purchase and sales agreement to Singpoli. For what? I'm honestly asking why. The city clerk herself even said that there were 76 unique emails. Why weren't they all read aloud? The 76 unique emails at the very least should have been read aloud. Why were they not? On top of that, these emails accompanied another 200 emails that resembled each other and were also sent, also opposing the extension of this purchase and sales agreement. How does a reaction like this not ring any bells or any alarms? Why were these comments disregarded, ignored, pushed to the side? These emails were sent by real residents that were concerned about their city. These were students, mothers, fathers, business owners, former city employers, employees, scientists, your constituency, the very people you serve, and yet their concerns were invalidated, ignored, and silenced. There was no one that stood up and tried to make sure that these emails were all read aloud. No one. No one defended the voices of your own residents. Be the leader that you swore to be, that we elected you to be, please. You censored residents' voices because of their opposition and ignored their comments further when it finally came time to vote. No discussion at all, no acknowledgement of the emailed comments whatsoever. Because of this, I ask that you rescind your vote and end the purchase and sales agreement to Singpoli. At the same time, please read aloud emailed public comments, as many can't tune in and calls to be heard at the city council meetings. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you so much. Okay, Yusuf, okay, next one, please.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Daniel Luna, followed by Aaron Lopez.
West Covina, and calling today, well, I, to express my concerns about the handling with the public commenting, but also to talk about the BKK land deal. So while I understand that COVID is unprecedented and many entities are struggling how to adapt and how to allow people to continue working as they were before and to participate in the way that they did before, we do think that the BKK deal shows that here the city council wants to continue with the business as usual, which is moving forward with this deal, even though the buyer themselves seem to be questioning whether it makes sense, because they're also seeing that it may not be business as usual. And I think Mayor Wu was quoted in the media saying that, oh, well, we need money, that's why this is, deal's going through. Hmm, yeah, but it's this one-shot injection of money, it won't suffice. $13 million, I mean, won't last much, and the history of BKK, of that land, shows that it should just be left alone. It was not a good idea before COVID, and it isn't, it's an even worse idea now with COVID. And now that more people are becoming more conscious and aware of things and seeing that things shouldn't be business as usual. So with this, I would encourage all the city council members and the city manager to evaluate the budget and figure out whether there can be cost savings, and then also not miss opportunities. I mean, on the agenda today, you have two items, one involving the MOU for the Police Management Association, which, contrary to what I'm seeing in other agreements with other public employees, I don't see them agreeing to some type of temporary cut in pay or anything like that. I do see that there may be some changes to the retirement contributions. But I do see that with the non-s sworn police support staff, the city council is trying to approve some cuts in the way they're doing that and trying to do some cost savings. So I would encourage the city council to take this opportunity in the middle of this pandemic where people are being more reflective and trying to operate in a different manner, to find other ways to save money and to adopt more sustainable ways of having revenue instead of trying to look for these one-time deals that really won't solve the long-term picture. So with that, also, I want to address how the city manager was also, I think, quoted saying that a lot of the participants in the last call were not residents of West Covina. That's not true, and it's very dismissive and improper from that type of leadership because it's a way to not even listen and reflect on what people are saying. So I hope that they take this opportunity to be more reflective. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Okay, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Ms. Erin Lopez, followed by caller, ending in 3033. Go ahead, Erin.
Good evening. My name is Erin, and I'm a lifelong resident of West Covina. At the last city council meeting, hundreds of public comments regarding the extension of the sales agreement with Singpoli regarding BKK were censored. This is absolutely ridiculous. Regardless of the volume of messages received, each and every constituent deserves to have their voice heard. The continued discouragement of public opinion on a variety of issues in the city becomes more common with each and every meeting. The very residents that the city council claims to represent have continuously been pushed out of democratic process. This is unacceptable. The suppression of public participation cannot continue in the city of West Covina. I urge the city council to work with the public to find the most effective way to pursue public participation in this unprecedented time and to rescind the vote in sales agreement with Singpoli, an opinion the majority of constituents have expressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Okay, next speaker, please.
Speaker, ending in 3033. Please state your name.
Great. Good evening, mayor and council. This is Speaker 3033. Actually, this is James Toma. I'm a former council member and mayor. I think I got disconnected briefly, Lisa.
Oh, sorry about that. Thank you for calling back.
No problem. I want to make sure that you all saw the news that the State Fair Political Practices Commission issued penalties against the West Covina Firefighters PAC for its failure to report tens of thousands of dollars that were spent to elect Mayor Wu, Councilmember Castellanos, and City Treasurer Rosati. When Mayor Wu and I served together on the council, the fire department expenditures were out of control and busting our budget. Mayor Wu resisted all attempts to control salary and excessive overtime, and now we know why he did so. The firefighters spent tens of thousands of dollars to get the two of you elected, and that was a small price, of course, because you've kept paying them back multiple times over. First, there's the excessive overtime and the increased salaries and the millions of dollars. Second, Councilmember Castellanos sits on the audit committee but has done nothing about requests to audit the excessive overtime in the fire department after the prior council took steps to control those costs. Third, there's your binding promise in the MOU that if a tax measure ever passes, you would reward them with a bounty of some more millions of dollars in additional pay increase. In other words, you've guaranteed that any future tax revenue would go to their raises. Now, you're preparing to pay back the firefighters once again by contracting out city fire services to LA County Fire. It's what the firefighters have wanted for years, even though the voters said no. You would also close two of the five fire stations in West Covina, but hey, at least the firefighters get their jobs with the county. I'm not sure if I've ever seen Councilmember Castellanos so energized and fired up, so to speak, as when he made the motion to recommend that the city contract out its services with LA County Fire. Other members of the audit committee disagreed, but the firefighters didn't spend tens of thousands of dollars to support their campaigns, did they? Show us that you're not going to jump whenever your political benefactors ask you to. Show us that you can put the interests of residents over political interests. And speaking of residents' interests, I want to comment on what happened at the last city council meeting. Many of us submitted written comments, as you've already heard, based on the city's policy, and the mayor's repeated promise that our comments would be read aloud. You changed that policy in the middle of the meeting because you didn't like what you started to hear on BKK. You then made things worse by lying to the public, saying that the comments against BKK were all the same. They were not. As an example, in my own comments, I asked, what happened to the $2 million when you sold city land last year at the Eastland Center? Where did all that money go? I haven't received a reply yet, and it's been a couple weeks. Your statements that all the comments were the same were obviously false. Maybe even worse than changing your policy because you didn't like the comments was what you did afterward. You received almost 300 comments against the BKK agreement on the landfill hotel development, but you voted yes by placing it on the consent calendar without any discussion. You silenced residents, you ignored their wishes, and you didn't have the decency to even explain why. Your actions and your silence signal either cowardice or contempt for your own constituents. Please tell us which it is. Be better. Show some leadership.
Okay, who was the speaker?
Mr. James Toma.
Oh, James Thomas. Okay, thank you, James. Okay, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is caller, ending in 48, I'm sorry, 7894. Can you please state your name?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Can you please state your name?
Yes, my name is Stephen Medina.
Stephen Medina?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So recently, there has been a sparse interest and vigor in the transparency and accountability of local government, West Covina being one of them. At the same time, the COVID pandemic has drastically limited how citizens interact and can participate in these same governments. In a recent article with the San Gabriel Tribune, the mayor described receiving 280 emails for your last city council meeting as an abuse to the system. The city manager also mentioned the city was, quote-unquote, "overwhelmed" by the messages. Considering our population is barely over 100,000, that's a bit of a stretch and a bit overdramatic. And reading a person's email is the most peaceful form of protest they could provide. But the watering down and generalization of citizens' emails at your last meeting was a complete dismissal of their valid questions, comments, and concerns, and strips them all of their collective power. And not reading them out loud during your open session is careless. But I understand it works to the council's benefit to not have those collective voices heard publicly. Instead, you hide them in your agendas and minutes, out of sight, out of mind. I'm sure if 280 citizens attended your meetings in person and opposed your decision-making, that atmosphere and the work you accomplished would be drastically different. Hired any citizen of West Covina, conservative, liberal, or wherever you land on the political spectrum, to contest this suppression of your perspectives and voices. If the city is truly overwhelmed by this type of messages, it is the responsibility of the city to take action in creating a fair aura, a system it can actually manage while also properly amplifying and hearing concerns of the citizen. Silence because it feels like an inconvenience to you benefits no one else's but the platform of the city council members. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Okay, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Ms. Sarah Love.
Can you reset the clock, please?
Yes. Sarah Love, go ahead.
I didn't realize you were going to let me speak up, sorry.
Ms. Love, I need you to speak up. We cannot hear you.
You guys cannot hear me?
No, we cannot hear you.
You can't hear me?
No. Are you on speaker? Are you on a speakerphone or a telephone?
Telephone. It's a blur thing, so you should be able to hear me.
No, it sounds like you're in a tunnel, ma'am. We're not able to hear you.
Oh, my goodness. Do you want to try to read this or no? Can you read it?
We cannot hear you.
Okay, phone, thank you. Can't hear anything?
Ma'am, we cannot hear you.
Hmm, I don't know what to do. Oh, wait.
Can you speak, if you speak louder, we could hear you.
How about now? No?
Can you speak loudly into the phone?
I'm not on the phone. I'm on a Bluetooth microphone. Can you hear me?
It's not clear, ma'am.
All right. I don't know what to do. That's all I have right now. I'm not on the phone. I just have a message for the city council member that censored me, and I sent it in an email, so I hope they...
Ms. Love, is there any way you can dial back on a phone?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, I will.
Please do so.
Okay.
That was our last speaker, ma'am, so we're going to give her a few minutes.
Does she want to, we dial so we can listen to her?
Yes, she's supposed to dial in.
Can she dial in? Okay.
Yes, we're giving her.
We want to move on, then we can bring her back?
All right.
Is she's...
Ms. Love, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. Let me quickly, you can't back here. Greetings, Mr. Mayor and the city council. Don't ever try to silence me again. This message also goes to the Public Employee Union Rep President tonight. A council member convinced the administrators of the community website to open a buzz for me. I am not stupid. I suspected it because it was right before the possible decision to move over to LA County Fire. I could have left it alone, but I turned the admins into... I am not stupid. I suspected it because it was right before the possible decision to move over to LA County Fire. I could have left it alone, but I turned the admins into telling me. So don't worry, I kept the screenshots too. I'm also concerned about moving the comment times to 3:00 PM, but thank you for listening to me now. We all feel like we're being silenced. The council member who had the community member found me once sent me a message that said, "Sarah, you are very smart and not playing the game." Well, I know the powerful create division chaos and illusion to maintain power and money. Looks like we have our own West Covina state. I would like to tell you that that council member, as any other council member, you guys have no idea how smart I am, and I won't be silenced about my city. I'm a resident and promptly vaccinated. You can see the purse string that's great influence on this council with the 12% raises and the promise of more with new revenue streams. What else will we find? What about us, residents? Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, appreciate. So do we have any other speaker?
We only have one speaker, Mayor, for public comment during the public hearing.
Okay, then we wait for our agenda, then we go.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much, and I think city manager, city attorney, okay, I think start with city manager to respond, okay, to concern. I think the concern about censorship. So would you please, okay, elaborate about, okay, what their concern is about?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to address a couple of the comments that were made tonight. Several of them pertain to public participation. The city is honoring comments in different ways tonight. We're welcoming letters or emails, and those letters and emails will continue to be part of the public record of the meeting and are being read when they're submitted, as they're submitted. They're not being read out loud, but that leads us to the second avenue by which people can participate, which is the phone calls, and I'd like to thank the callers for finding the time to do that tonight. If I may, I'd like to address some of the other comments that came in.
Now, go ahead, go ahead.
One of our speakers had some comments and suggestions about the justice assistance grants. It's a routine item. The council is being asked to appropriate $17,856 for some unmet law enforcement supplies. These are items that are needed supplies, but for which there's always a shortage of money to obtain. Investigation tools, some computer software, some cartridges, some batteries, and that's recommended for your approval later this evening. A number of the callers had comments about the BKK transaction, which was approved at the last meeting. I'd like to ask our Assistant City Manager to just give a brief update about some status and items on the horizon with respect to the same quality and BKK matter.
Yeah, go ahead, Muck.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and City Manager. The item that the city council approved at the last meeting, which was the amendment to the purchase and sale agreement and the access agreement to the property, does not approve a project. We actually do not yet have an application from the developer, Sing Poli, nor has the sale of the property closed. What the city council approved last meeting was an extension of the purchase and sale agreement, and that was a request by the developer due to the pandemic. The new date for closing is by October 31st. If the developer closes on the property, they would still need to submit an application and go through the environmental review process. I think, as many people in the community know, or may know, I should say, the California Environmental Quality Act is a very rigorous process. It does require multiple community meetings, as well as public hearings before both the Planning Commission and the city council. So I think what I'd like to tell people is that we are a long way from seeing a project or having a project approved. There were also some comments made about the LEA, the Local Enforcement Agency. We recently replaced, the city recently replaced the LEA and brought back the former LEA because the firm that had been doing it for the last few years, we believe, was not being very effective and certainly not representing the community interests. So we believe that change out is actually a positive for the community. So I just wanted to put out a couple of facts on the project, and we do have information on the project, on the city's, or, excuse me, on the status of the property on the city's website. And once we do receive an application, that will also be posted on the city's website.
Mayor, if I could continue, a couple of the speakers asked questions about the status of the possibility of the LA County Fire Department contract. That is still staff work in progress. One of the biggest issues in the minds of the transaction is the cost of getting the city's facilities and equipment, personal protective equipment, communications equipment, et cetera, up to county standard so that it could be put into service by the county should that contract be approved by the council ultimately. Those detailed costs of the different repairs that are needed, assessments for asbestos and mold, the cost of the physical rehabilitation of the stations where there's, needs to be structural repairs, the dormitory facilities, the communications equipment, all of that is still very much being studied. And until we have all those numbers in place, we can't present anything for community or council consideration because the devil's in the details on that. We need to know precisely what those transition costs would be. The counties indicated they could crosswalk those over three fiscal years, and that would have to be a comparative to the services provided and the cost of those services. Finally, a couple of the callers had questions about the contracts, the employee contracts that run the agenda tonight. Tonight, council is being asked to ratify agreements with the Police Management Association and with the Non-Sworn Safety Group. Previously, the council's approved contract with the Police Office Association, the firefighters. All of these contracts represent reductions in the benefit side of the compensation for the employees. The other groups, those conversations are still at the table where they belong. We believe we're making progress with, good progress with those groups, and as those are finalized, we'll present those on future agendas for your consideration and ratification. And I think that's all I have in response to public comments this evening.
Okay, and I think, okay, the previous, okay, city council, James Thomas, asking about, okay, we, okay, on Eastland Mall, we sold for $2 million. Okay, he asking about where's the money?
Right.
So can you show us where's the money?
I can. That Eastland Shopping Center was part of a complicated redevelopment package that was approved by a prior city council years ago. One of the aspects of that original land transaction was that they had a right to purchase one of the interior parcels within the parking lot of the Eastland Shopping Center. The current ownership wanted to elect that. There was some negotiation back and forth, and the price came up. It was recorded as a general fund revenue and used for general fund purposes to meet expenses for city operations.
So basically, that is approved by the previous council member, including, okay, myself and, okay, Councilmember Johnson, okay, to sell that parking lot to Eastland Mall. Am I correct?
That, you're correct.
Okay, and it's closed, and the money already, okay, the parking lot transferred basically for this complex, the Eastland Mall, and the money already deposited into our general fund and book and have a record?
Yes, sir.
So would you please, okay, we can show to previous council member, James Toma, because he asked about where's the money? So, okay, thank you. And I think, okay, and quickly, I want to, okay, city attorney to address about the freedom of speech regarding, because I think a lot of residents, okay, they feel like, okay, we didn't read the email, it's some kind of censorship. But I think city attorney have to address that issue. Do we have any violation for the First Amendment of freedom of speech?
Mr. Mayor, the city's policy with regard to public participation was in compliance with Governor Newsom's executive orders. It's in compliance with the Brown Act, and it's in compliance with your municipal code. And also, your municipal code allows you to limit the duration of public speak, of public comments when it chooses so.
So we have nothing to against censorship, or we ever do anything to censor the people, freedom of speech?
You provided an opportunity for them to be heard, either they call in or they provide an email to be submitted to the city council. It becomes part of the minutes, it becomes part of the record.
We have received all the email, okay, and we really want to have people to, okay, participate. Okay, we welcome their call in, and maybe next, okay, meeting, if we can approve by the county health department, then we can have them to come in to in-person address to us. Okay, I think it's important to participation, not only, okay, for the people, but also for a lot of people have other issue, okay? We need them to address because we don't want people to get discouraged because we have only one side for a lot of their comment, but this to have some people want to address some other issue. So we want to have everybody have a chance to address council, but they welcome to send us email. They welcome to send or call us so to let us, okay, understand their, all our concern, okay, their concern. So I think this is something about the public, okay, matter. We welcome the people, okay, to address to us. And, okay, Councilman Castellano, you have something to say? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to also address former Councilman James Toma. He wants to complain about our firefighter association supporting me, yourself, and our treasurer, Colleen Rosati. Well, James, you know, I've kind of, I've kept this in a long time, but let's talk about it. Let's talk about what you said to me at our in-person meeting at 85 Degrees that you asked me to. Let's tell the public how you tried to tell me that you would help me in this year's election in District Three, even though I don't live there. I found that to be pretty corrupt and wrong. Let's talk about how you told me that you already had $30,000 in your campaign, and you snapped your finger in my face and told me you could raise 30 more just like that. Let's talk about that. Let's talk about how you told me that if I took any money from developers, that you would attack me. It was so satisfying to see the color leave your face when I told you I would be self-funding. You didn't know that about me, did you? So please, please knock it off. You've also made comments on social media alleging corruption. Please, please stop the lies and prove it if you're going to allege corruption. Tomi Nerva, you wanted, you wanted me to speak. I'll speak. You've called both of my offices belligerently harassing my staff because you receive marketing. I had to block two of your phone numbers. Please never do that again. That was crazy. There are other comments I'd like to address, but I don't want to drag on, and those are the two I'll leave at that.
Yeah, I think, thank you, okay, Councilman Castellano, okay, I think, okay, leave the elections over, okay, and they have a new election coming in today, okay, this year, so, but leave, let, leave out the elections.
I agree. It's been two years.
Yes, okay, and so, so please, let's focus on our public policy, and let's continue to move on. And you want to say something too? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, thank you for calling in. I know Emmy Lou, she also sent us an email in regards to her comment in regard in the grant. I know our city manager stated already, but I just wanted to let you know that it is a grant under the, and they have their own federal requirements. This grant must be used to meet local law enforcement need and cannot be used to supplement existing funds or ongoing activities budgeted elsewhere, so we can't direct those funds anywhere else. Just to clarify that, it's no cost to the city, so I know they mentioned about our budget. So it doesn't come out of our general fund, and we're not using our city budget. As for this county situation, we have, we're not making any decisions till we get all the facts, so I just, that is in regards to county fire. We're still waiting for information, so when that occurs, it will be all out in the open. Also, I know questions, I think Ms. Ramirez mentioned, you know, mental incidents did go up, yes, overall, and the COVID doesn't help, especially with the increase of suicide, depression, and so forth. But a lot of times, everybody wants to hit the local government as city, like city can fix all. A lot of the things occurs in county level and in state level. So an example is like the Measure M. We all pay for it, and we get very little back in our city. So a few of these go at a higher level in county and state. And that's, and for the emails on BKK, a lot of them sent us an email to vote no on a hotel. We didn't vote no, I mean, we didn't vote on a hotel. It was an extension which was approved before, and it was just an extension. So I just wanted to thank, you know, our staff for clarifying a few of the other situations. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to say something, possibly.
You want to say something too?
No.
You want to be equal? Okay, go ahead.
I got an equal rights, even though I'm in the back row. No, I just want to make it very clear to all those residents about the emails they sent in. I want to just go on record that I answered 180 of those emails myself. You go on record on it. So, you know, the saying that the council wasn't concerned and wasn't listening to them, because I bet you be very well, I listened to every one of you, and I answered every one of your emails, and I think emails should have been read. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Johnson. Okay, any other council want to say anything? Okay, all the...
I do.
Okay, Jessica, go ahead.
Okay, I just want to address the issue of public comments, and I'm having a bit of a hard time hearing clearly some of the comments, so I apologize if I repeat something that a fellow council member said. I became aware at the last meeting that there were some emails that were not read that were substantially different than the form ones on BKK. And I just want to say that I'm disappointed. I know there were, I don't, I don't even know the exact number that were different. And so when I found out about one in particular, I had that read during council comments at my request. And I was disappointed later to find out that more were not read. So for me, it is important that while members of our community cannot join us in chambers, that email comments that are different, I'm not talking about the form emails, but email comments that are different are read into the record out loud so people can hear that. Because a lot of the people who would be talking on this issue would have joined us in chambers. And so I think the council as a whole needs to have a discussion about how we're going to handle this. It may be a moot point because chambers may be open by the next meeting, so people can come and comment, and we can go back to our original policy. Because I do not like that people continue to paint the council as trying to suppress public comment when the policy has always been to not read emails out loud, but that we were reading emails out loud because of the situation we're in. I also don't like that email comments have to get to us by, get to the city by three, especially when there was not really a lot of notice that we were changing that policy. And so I think this is an issue that we need to talk about unless it becomes moot by the next meeting. BKK continues to be a huge topic, and I cannot express strongly enough my frustration that people continue to mislead our residents. As the Assistant City Manager said, what we did at the last meeting was extend the right of Sing Poli to purchase the non-dumped-on parts of BKK. It did not change anything that would have to happen should Sing Poli decide to actually develop there. By extending their ability by 90 days to close on purchasing the property, the city made their deposit of over $400,000 hard, which means we get to keep it regardless of whether they close in 90 days. I keep hearing in the community that we want to poison our community. That could not be further from the truth. Unlike most of these people who are emailing in from different states, I have lived 1,000 feet or yards from the border of that dump for the majority of my life. I sure as heck want to know what's going on there. Nobody in the community made the choice to live in a community that has an unmined toxic dump. And we have a company coming in who wants to develop there. And before they can even develop there, they are going to have to go through agency after agency after agency, do so many geological studies and environmental studies and everything else so that our community will finally have an answer as to what is going on up there. And yet, we're the bad guys because we don't have the money to do that, to explore how far that dump has contaminated our community, yet that makes us the bad guys, having somebody else do it for us. I mean, when will the silliness stop in saying we want to poison our communities? No, nobody on the council wants to poison the community. The people on the council want to know what that dump has done to our city and what we can do to make it a beautiful point in our city, to clear up the ugliness, and to make sure that it's... sure that it is safe for us. You know, we get emails saying we want hiking trails, we want open space. Look at the plans! Because Saint Pauli wants to finish off the hiking trails that connect to Gaster Park and the rest of the hiking trails in the area. There's going to be an outdoor amphitheater that's not going to be developed on. There's going to be greenhouses. There's going to be so many things for our community to do while at the same time, we will know exactly what we're dealing with there. And if they are ever allowed to build anything there, there is going to be an astronomical amount of monitoring that will have to go on, just like there's the monitoring at the heights and at Big League Dreams, which people somehow think was not dumped last, which is completely ridiculous because that was the entrance to it. So, I ask the people who continue to mislead people to be honest, or at least give them the other viewpoints. And stop scaring people into believing that this council is going to poison them or wants to poison them, because most of you are smart enough to know what is going to go into the process, if it even gets built. But you know what? If it doesn't get built, we will at least have environmental studies that we would have not had any other way. So, that's all I have to say on that. You heard what I had to say about public comments. And then, you know, the, defund the police and the fire and changing fire department into county. Thank you, City Manager Carmody, for answering to changing to LA County for the fire departments. It has, it's not a decision that has been made, and it is not a discussion yet for the public, because as we've said numerous times, and I've asked a million questions, a lot of those questions haven't been answered, and we're waiting for more information. So, instead of putting nefarious purposes on the council because certain residents are bitter about an election loss, why don't you, why don't you actually pay attention to votes that have happened? And there has been no votes on the council to move to county. There's just been a lot of questions on what the process would be and what the cost would be. So, while we continue to try and turn a city around that has been on the decline for a long time, I would ask that every so often, we all be given the benefit of the doubt. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Shoemaker. Okay, and, okay, and I want to quickly, okay, follow up. I don't want to say anything because, okay, and, because I don't want to take too much time, okay, but, but since, okay, Councilmember Shoemaker talked about BKK and about, okay, people continue to talk about, okay, council just greedy, want to sell this to, okay, and developer, but people have to understand, okay, we, when 2016, okay, I started as a council member, I already say, we need to do something about this dump, okay? We want to do something, as 30-some years, I live in West Covina, okay, it's how can we get rid of this dump? How can we make a beautiful park? How can we make an open space? How can we have a trail? Okay, how can we make sure the South Side resident, the drinking water, okay, or their air quality that is secure with all the children living on the South Side? Okay, I think this is important. We have to see, okay, and this dump and to, 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 okay, to our city, okay? This dump's really, okay, become a major problem to our, our city. Since 1996, it closed, it's still here today, it's still continuing to issue. They said they want to plant the tree, they want to make it beautiful, but never happened. Look at the tree, it's all dead. Why they didn't do the same thing, cross tree of the Pacific Pond, with a lot of tree, okay, put in their hill dump? Look at, it's nothing but tree. You can barely see, okay, any of this, that's a dump. But look at our BKK. Thirty-some years, never changed. Tree, it's, it's, it's all dead and then we see nothing about a death hill, okay? Scary and see pie, all the places. How can they improve our quality of life? Okay, and the people don't understand, if we don't, okay, have some, okay, money coming in, people stay in county, they don't see the elephant in our room. The elephant about this BKK, the potential contamination. We want, okay, make sure, okay, that the, all the regulatory agency can check into it to make sure, okay, this side, okay, that is, can be secure, can be no contamination for our children to, okay, our generation to come. That's why we're here. We're here to protect, okay, our residents, for our future, for our generation. And this BKK over here is really, okay, over there to become a major potential landmine to our city. So I think this is important for city, for our resident, okay, looking to it. What we're trying to do, we try to get rid of dump. We not try to save the dump. Some people want to save the dump, okay, but we are trying to get rid of dump. We want an open space, we want on the top cap so the water won't continue sipping to the underground water table, that potentially in trouble for everybody, we all drinking the underground water. So something, people should look into the reason why we try to over here, okay, why we try to do this thing to secure, to, to help, to have open space, because the view on the top is spectacular for all the resident to enjoy it. Not few people live on the top. There should be every, our resident have the right to go on the top, to enjoy the scenery, to enjoying, okay, this open space. That's why our goal, okay, that's how our mission to help our resident to have this very horrible scar in our city history can be something become enjoyable for our resident and for our generation to come. So, okay, Councilman Castellano, you want to say something? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Wu. Well, yeah, that was very well said by both you and Councilmember Shoemaker. I also had something ready to, to respond to the comments that we have sent through emails and our city staff has answered those very well, but I'd like to let the public know that we welcome any and all comments. But I would like to request that you please not flood our inbox with the same copied and pasted email, emails. Yusuf and your group, I applaud you guys for wanting to get involved in local politics, but I would also like to ask for you to be fair and objective. This is the same group that flooded our email inboxes with copied and pasted emails to defund the police. It's also the same group that attacked our brave fire department without fully understanding what was going on and long before a decision was to be made, and a decision still has not been made because we do not have all the information we need, as has been discussed today multiple times. Now I see on the Instagram, on the link in the bio, that they post the instructions to copy and paste, copy and paste guide in, in the section called tip sheet. The previous emails regarding BKK talked about a hotel. I'd like to point out that the word hotel was not even in the agenda item at all. It's sad to see so much anger by way of misleading and misdirection. You guys have my cell phone number. Please hit me up if you've got questions. You didn't reach out to me to discuss your concerns. Instead, you chose to flood our emails with direction from political opponents and language such as your negligent and ridiculous decision to move forward with building this hotel. As I mentioned, hotel was not even mentioned. Flooding our inboxes with aggressive language may not be the best way to have a dialogue with us. It was reported back to me that some members of the public stopped watching last, the last meeting because they thought we were going to read an abundance of emails. We want public participation. We don't want to be attacked by way of flooding of our inboxes. I would also like the public to know that defunding the police is not the same as reallocating resources, and I'm in no way, shape, or form in favor of defunding the police. In closing, I would like to request anyone who has questions, comments, or concerns to please have a positive dialogue with us and not flood us with copy and pasted emails. Directing unknowing participants to repeat what one person has drafted is not the same as objective public commentary. Thank you, and we hope to continue this conversation in a positive and meaningful way.
Okay, thank you. It's okay, Councilman Castellano, I think, okay, I really, okay, extend my hand, okay, to all the residents, some of residents, they have issue. We want, I want to have a meeting with them, okay? I would explain to them, they can ask me all the question. I think it's important to, if you want the communication, we want to give you the communication. I want willing to, to show up, okay, to face you guys, to see, and even, okay, the residents, they've been talking about apologize, apologize, okay, my apology to a person is pretty racist based on that. I want to apologize to, okay, our former police chief, okay, because, okay, he's on founders, okay, no ground accusation. If you have any proof, okay, go ahead, send to the DA, I say FBI, FPPC, or go ahead to tell, okay, do you have anything, okay, and check everything, what this is about. So I think enough of, because election coming up and the people try to get some of the, okay, the time, but I want to say this very clearly, if you have any of issue, okay, if you have any evidence, please go to the DA, go to the FPPC, go to FBI, okay? Make sure the city, okay, council, okay, is clean, okay? I have no problem, okay, to face everything, okay, regarding any detail. Our job here is to really serve our resident and to make sure our city in good hand. So other than that, okay, I want to move on, okay, because I don't want to go too much of back and forth, but political thing due to the election coming up, so I want to move on. It's okay, can I move on? Okay, can I move on? Let's move on to the, okay, manager report. Go ahead.
Thank you, man. Counsel, I just a couple items I wanted to mention this evening. First, I think the biggest news in City Hall came last week when we closed on the lease revenue bonds to address the question of the unfunded pension liability. Some people like to see numbers side by side, and this chart shows a side-by-side comparative. Column on the left would be the amount that the city would have paid in each of these current and in the next few fiscal years, had we not done this bond issue. So in this year, we would have been sending in about $1.2 million a month, or about $13.4 million on the year. With these bonds in the first year, we're going to be paying about $3.5 million. So the savings in terms of general fund cash in the first year is going to be north of $10 million. Lest anyone get excited about spending that money, I need to say, that just gets us back to broke. We need to have the reserves built back up so that we're in compliance with the Government Finance Officers Association recommendation, that we have two months of revenue at all times as an absolute minimum. The city's policy is higher than that, and we need to rebuild the reserves back to where they need to be. Next chart shows the same data, just in graph form. The blue mountain behind kind of stair steps up very dramatically, and the green line shows how the payments are smoothed out. By refinancing the debt from 7%, we were paying CalPERS, to a fixed 3.7% over the same time term, we were able to achieve a net present value savings of north of $50 million. And that's, it's going to make a meaningful progress toward our goal of making the city fiscally healthy. Next slide. We had some questions at City Hall this week. Residents aren't hesitant to express concerns, but I just wanted to highlight what's going on with U-Sports, which is, under the county orders, we're not supposed to be doing that. And I know that a lot of people have their kids in travel ball, a lot of families depend on U-Sports leagues. Under this county order, U-Sport leagues cannot operate. There's to be no team practices, no scrimmages, no games are allowed. I'm frankly at a loss because we really are depending on voluntary compliance with these orders. They're not just suggestions, they're orders. I had a staff member suggest to me this week, we should put K-rails across the middle of the field. Seems a little dramatic. Not sure I want to do that. I just want people to be mindful of these orders and not do it, and not try and say to a community services staff member who approaches them that it's, it's, it's not really a practice, it's a, it's a other kind of gathering. It's, we all know what's going on and we just like for it to not happen during this time. We've got a real outbreak in this community reflected in our own workforce, and we just like for people to do some social distancing and not, not have the leagues operating. Next slide. I mentioned earlier, because the county classified it as an outbreak, we had to shut down the City Hall and the police station lobby again. If we get clearance by the end of the week to reopen, we certainly will, but it'll be dependent on the county health department agreeing to that. Next slide. We showed a fairly pretty picture of what the parks look like if the grass is green and the trash cans are emptied. We could have showed a picture of some overflowing trash cans. I'm going to be bringing to you at your next meeting, intending to seek ratification for their maintenance contractors. We've pared back those contracts even further to reduce services. I guarantee you just one thing, no one is going to like it, least of all those of us that are charged with keeping these facilities shipshape, but we're just trying to manage any possible discretionary expenditure and, and cut those things back to an absolute minimum, but we'll, we'll take that up at your next meeting. Next slide. This is a depiction of the plan that the city traffic engineer has now endorsed. We're going to get these barricades put in place. We've seen some communities in Southern California where the barricading of the public rights of way have been done maybe more casually. I've seen nearby communities, and I won't mention them by name, but maybe you can picture it, where they've closed parking spaces on public streets with just those little ready-made picket fences that you can get at the home improvement stores. It's, if somebody were to drive through one of those and injure people dining outdoors, alfresco or whatever, it's only a bad outcome for the city. So we're going to follow the protocol here. The, the city traffic engineer has stamped a plan. We're going to go to TMI or one of the private vendors and get those water fields or K-rails in place and then allow the restaurants to get out there. We've approved a number of these just on a verbal basis. The administrative use permit is to be over the counter and no fee. If they're on private property, it's pretty easy to allow them to do what they will. In the public space, we got to be especially careful because people just drive crazy. They, they text and drive, they drink and drive, they drive badly. And if it turns out to be an injury in the public right of way, cities always seem to have a way to get, get sued. This last slide, we didn't show a video, but we wanted to get a screenshot and recognize some of the good things that are happening in the community with the pizza store celebrating the fact that my Dodgers are back. And that's all I've got this evening. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, city managers. Okay, I'm going to move on to save some time, going to move on on the consent calendar, okay? And we have one, two, eight, and any other? I know you, you say no on four.
I have two.
You want to?
Well, no, I do, Mr. Mayor, I'd like, I want to put my, a no on item number four, which I was no last, last, the last meeting on that one.
Yes.
And I do want to vote no, I want to put a no on the item number nine, because I think the 200 square feet.
Number nine? Number nine is public, is public hearing.
Oh, that's a public hearing?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Don't wait for the public hearing. Okay, so, so you, I know you, last time, the film permit, okay, you say no on number four. Okay, and other city, Jessica, do you want to pull anything?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, okay, do I have a motion to approve, okay, agenda item number one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight? And I know number four, and, okay, and Councilman Johnson saying no. So do I have a motion?
I motion to approve it.
Okay, Mayor Protem Lopez Viado moved the motion, and I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember, okay, Councilmember Castellano, Rocko, please.
Councilman Castellanos.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye with a no on four.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado.
Aye.
Mayor Wu.
Aye, okay, motion approved. Okay, five, zero on, okay, beside the number four, that would be four, one. Okay? Then we move on to public hearing, agenda number nine. Okay, regarding the public hearing, okay, my, okay, number nine, okay, public hearing to consider the co-amendment to number 20-04 for residential agricultural zone R, okay, R-A, and the single-family residential zone R1, the standard, okay? And this matter set for hearing by the council consists of an ordinance for the R-1, okay, residential agricultural zone, and R1, single-family, okay, residential zone, the code of five, okay, certain amendment in chapter 26 of the municipal code, where the city could verify a proper legal notice has been given?
Yes, proper legal notice has been given.
Thank you so much. At this time, I will open the public hearing and invite public comment on co-amendment number 20-04. There will be, okay, the presentation of the staff report. Then we shall hear from those in favor of the proposal, then those opposed. Ms. Carmody, City Manager, who will present the staff report?
Mayor, this report will begin by Joanne Burns, our City Planning Manager.
Yeah, go ahead, Joanne.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council members and members of the public. I'll go, first, I'll go, go ahead and go over the background of this proposed code amendment. On February 5th, 25th, 2020, the Planning Commission held a study session in a, in On February 25, 2020, the Planning Commission held a study session and initiated this proposed draft code amendment. Then on April 28, 2020, the Planning Commission held a public hearing. However, this public hearing was continued to a date uncertain to allow more time for public participation, and also, at the time, the Planning Commission directed staff to come back with more information regarding residential options for street parking permit request. And on June 24, 2020, the Planning Commission held a hearing and adopted resolution number 20-6042 recommending that the city council approve the code amendment. I'll go ahead and go over the first proposed change, which are changes to section 26-63, and also section 26-391. The definition of non-habitable bonus room was added. As far as habitable bonus rooms, this allows for the construction of a 200-square-foot non-habitable bonus room. And just to point out that this particular section came about because we've received several inquiries from citizens who would like to propose a non-habitable bonus room that is fully, that has full insulation and has heating and air, but they do not want to propose an accessory dwelling unit. They don't want to put a kitchen. And currently, the code does not allow that. This is actually, this is, just to point out, this is different from the section right below this particular subsection, which covers workshops, garages, storage rooms, sheds, and storage sheds. So this, a non-habitable bonus room is not the same as workshops, garages, storage rooms, or storage sheds. These are basically fully insulated, has heating and air, and typically, it's designed for if somebody wants to put an exercise room that's detached, or a game room that's detached, that doesn't have a kitchen or has a bathroom. So to go over the certain development standards, no more than a one per lot, no interior bathroom, no kitchen, behind, it has to be behind the primary residence, it has to be 10 feet from another structure. It would not be allowed on properties with ADUs or junior ADUs, and a covenant is required. The next change is that existing garages are allowed to be converted into ADUs without replacement, and the West Covina Municipal Code requires four parking spaces for all homes constructed after January 1, 1993. The first change is to remove the January 1, 1993 date. The date is confusing because every house constructed from here on forward, what is constructed before or after that date, I'm sorry, after that January 1993 date. And also, another date that is proposed to be removed is the February 21, 2014 date for legal non-conforming parking spaces. If something is legal non-conforming, it doesn't have to be removed, or it can remain in place unless it's modified or changed, because the city does not have any sunset laws for structures or its development standards. Another change that is proposed, it limits addition to 300 square feet for residences with no garage or non-conforming parking. Again, state law allows ADUs to be constructed within an existing garage without replacement. So if somebody has, for instance, a garage that's converted into an ADU, and then the following year or two, they propose an addition that's 300 square feet or greater, then they would not be able to add that addition without adding another garage on the property. This, the next few slides are different sections that states draft languages for certain sections that are proposed to be modified. The first is the code section that I mentioned earlier, this is the language for that. So if a structure is adding, if you're adding on to the structure and it exceeds 300 square feet, then you would have to provide the required off-street parking spaces in a garage or the two off-street parking spaces required for all houses in the city. Again, just to point out, the red text are the changes that are being proposed to the existing municipal code standard. This is the draft language to section 26-402.5, B2, and also E. Currently, this, again, the city allows, or because of state law, garages are allowed to be converted into an accessory dwelling unit. And according to the city's code standard, current code standards, if a garage is converted into an accessory dwelling unit, then because of the definition of what a primary driveway is, and also because of the definition of what you can pave in your front yard, if you have no garage, then basically, you can't have any driveways. So we're adding the definition of required parking, we're adding required parking spaces in the definition of, into the definition of a primary driveway. So it would be, shall be defined as the area providing direct access from the street to a garage, carport, or required parking space. And on E, we're adding, in instances where the property does not have a garage or carport, the front yard driveway pavement shall be limited to 20 feet in width. Again, this is because the width for front yard pavement is limited to the width of the garage or carport plus an additional six feet. So it's based on that. So if there is no garage or carport, then there's no driveway. So we're adding this section. In section 26-405.7C, we are requiring any structure with an exterior wall height measuring 12 feet or more above adjacent grade, or any structure greater than 16 feet in height as measured from the lowest adjacent grade to the highest point, to have second-story setbacks. So this came about because we've been receiving several applications for structures that exhibit almost second-story mass and bulk, but it doesn't have a second floor. So it still has the same impact as a second floor to the neighboring residential property because it towers over the neighboring property's yard, and it blocks light like a second floor would that's close to the property line. But because of the way our code is written, it only requires single-story setbacks, which is five feet in most areas in the city. So this would, if an exterior wall height is higher than 12 feet, or if a structure is higher than 16 feet, then the addition or the proposed structure would have to comply with second-story setbacks, which is, in most places in the city, 10 feet for the side. This is a draft language for section 26-749.160A. It just clarifies that an administrative use permit is going to be required if a non-habitable bonus room is constructed on the lower pad area of a property in the animal-keeping overlay With this, staff recommend, I'm sorry, it is recommended that the city council approve amendment number 20-04 by first conducting a public hearing and then introducing for the first reading of the ordinance. The ordinance title is ordinance number 2473. With this, this concludes the staff report. If the city council has any questions?
Okay, thank you, Joanne. Okay, and the council, do you guys have any question? You go ahead. Yeah, Councilman Castellanos.
Well, I don't really have questions, but there is a lot in here that I don't like. So I'd probably be in favor of sending it back to Planning Commission. I mean, definitely, I don't like the limitation of 200 square feet for the non-habitable bonus rooms. I don't like the part about that only one will be allowed per lot. I mean, there's some lots in cities that are very large, and what if they want to have more than one? I don't like that if an ADU is on the property, you can't have a shed. There's also a lot of properties in the city that have a lot of these structures. I mean, this will limit people, like if, you know, right now, I've got a public storage unit, about to get a second one. But rather than do that, I'm exploring the possibility of maybe building two of these, and I have the space, so I don't like that. I don't like the, what was just discussed, the second-story setback. I don't like the limitation that it can't be between the front property line and a line parallel to the back. So I see a lot of problems with this. I'd like to send it back to Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Castellanos. And the other council want to have, which one go first?
Shouldn't go first.
Okay, Mayor Protem, go ahead.
I mean, I do share some of the same sentiments as Councilman Castellanos, but where did the 200 square feet come from? I mean, why that number? I don't even like, I mean, that number is ridiculous.
It was a number that the Planning Commission, I guess, agreed on. When it was brought towards, to the Planning Commission meeting, certain numbers were offered as an option by staff, and that's the number that they agreed on.
If those numbers were offered as an option by staff, where's the logic to that? I mean, where did, why those options? Okay, go ahead.
Just from my experience on the Planning Commission, I think sometimes when you have issues like this, the first step is just to take a stab at it and give it a shot. I think that some of these things proposed might make sense in areas of the city where lots are, you know, 7,000, 8,000, 9,000 square feet, but makes very little sense in areas around South Hills or other parts of the city where you've got acre lots or bigger. So I think that's probably where it stems from, is just kind of taking a crack at it from the first try. That's what I think from my experience.
So they didn't have the option of the square footage based on the lot size? That was not part of that option?
No, just numbers were thrown around, 200, 500, 1,000. So it was the lower number that was selected.
Okay, well, that being said, I mean, I also agree that I don't like how it's, how it looks and how everything is set up, so.
Okay, before I go to, okay, Councilman Johnson, I, Jessica, okay, because I want to be fair. Jessica, you want to say something? You have any question?
I just agree with my fellow councilmen that there needs to be some differentiation based on lot size in our city, because we have such a variety that it doesn't make sense if somebody has a huge lot to not allow multiple, you know, little dwellings, like a pool house and a guest house or whatever. But I think it's something that definitely needs to be looked at.
Okay, thank you so much, Councilmember Shoemaker, and Councilmember Johnson, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I tried to jump the gun before, but now I can talk about it. You know, first of all, I don't know where the 200 square feet came from. Even for a smaller lot, I think if they have a big enough backyard, I think that should be enlarged a little bit. But when you move to the bigger properties, like up in South Hills, everything else, I don't think one, we shouldn't limit it to one. You know, the smaller lots and stuff like I say, you know, 200, like I say, I think is ridiculous. So I think it should go back to Planning Commission. I think they need to look at it again, take a little bit of direction from the council, and go from there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Johnson. Okay, I have a question. The only thing I worry about all this, okay, coming from just council approval, will they be challenged by the state, okay? Because state, okay, and they give a guideline, okay, I know we want to have some control, okay? I understand, okay? We want, we don't want people building like crazy, okay? At the same time, we want to keep our community. By the same time, we need to be careful, okay, all this issue, we need to comply by the state mandatory, okay, those issues. So we really have to look into that thing. So other than that, I want to open up overall communication, okay, for public comment. Okay, can we go to public comment? Okay, again, then we bring back to the council discussion. Go ahead, public comment.
Good evening, Mayor. Our public, member of the public that we had, has hung up.
Oh, we're so sorry. Yeah, we talked too much. We want to restrain ourselves next time. We don't want to argue with residents, okay? It's all, it's my mistake, okay? And I go, I went, I kind of carried away. Okay, so my apology to the person want to, can he call back? Can he, can we just have him to call back? Yeah, we really want to listen to a comment for their concern. But I think, I can tell the majority already want to send back to planning, so maybe next time, okay, again, please call back, okay, join the discussion next time, okay? So right now, I'm going to close the public comment, come back to our, okay, council discussion. And I kind of already feel like everybody all have issue. My issue is, can this be challenged by our state? Because you need to really be careful, they really cracked down, okay? Because, okay, not in my backyard, okay, syndrome of all, okay, all the city, the resident, and I know they're suing some city already, so want to be careful on that. Otherwise, do I have a motion to move to, okay, table it, okay, for future discussions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table it and send it back to the Planning Commission.
Yep, so we're going to make the motion to continue, right? To be continued, right? To be continued, not table, to be continued for public hearing? So we want to send back to planning, am I right?
The motion to send back to Planning?
Yes. So we want to continue, right? Okay, so continue the public hearing, okay, send back to the planning department, the planning commission, to, okay, commissioner to look into it and to comply. And do I have a second?
I'll second it, Mayor.
Okay, second, okay. So I have, okay, motion moved by Councilman Johnson, and, okay, second by Councilman Castellanos to, okay, move back, okay, send back to planning commissioner, okay, planning committee to look into it, okay, and bring back to council to get a reading, okay? Rock call, please.
Councilman?
Councilman?
Councilman? Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye, and the motion, okay, two, five, zero. We send back to the planning, okay, to have a new discussion, and hopefully, they have something more reasonable to send back to it. Now we move, okay, to, okay, number 10, okay, item number 10. Consideration of voting, delegate, and alternate for League of California City 2020.
Oh, sorry, okay, oh, I'm getting old and getting late, okay? So I forgot to turn on the mic, okay? Let me repeat myself. We move to item number 10. Consideration of voting, delegate, and alternate for League of California City 2020 Annual Conference. Okay, Ms. Company, city manager, who will present the staff report? I don't think we need a staff report, we just nominate. No, what the heck is this? No, okay, I don't think we need it, we just nominate. I nominate, okay, Lowy Johnson, Councilman Johnson, as our delegate, because he's been delegate for us for so many years. I think he's very experienced. Am I willing to be alternate, okay, on this thing? Do I have a motion?
I will motion.
I know, I know.
And I'll second that.
Okay, you got, so lucky.
Thank you.
Okay, so you have to, you okay?
I'm good.
You're good, you're good, okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sorry, okay, you only one vote. Okay, so anyway, we have a motion, okay, moved by Mayor Protem, okay, Viado, and we have a second by Councilman Castellanos. And rock call, please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye, so, Councilman Johnson, okay, congratulations, you have been appointed again. Okay, so anyway, okay, five zero approve. Councilman Johnson, we will present West Covina to vote, okay? And you better to do the good job. Okay, so now we go to... Okay, so now we go to the AB one, two, three, four conference and meeting, and I know we don't have AB one, two, three, four. So we go to city council request, report and study. Do we have any comment from council member?
No, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a mother may I, if I may? Is that now or is that later?
Uh, yeah, you can, you can, you can do it, you can do it right now?
Okay, I, you know, I would like to have a mother may I brought back, you know, we discussed this sometime back about the sale of beer and wine and gas stations, and I'd like to have us take another look at it because, you know, with the situation we're in and stuff like that, we definitely need the revenue, and I think this will bring a good resource of revenue, so I'd like to have a mother may I.
Okay, and so we have a mother may I, it's okay, and I against this from the beginning, I will continue to against this, but again, do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I've always been in favor of this, so I will second Councilman Johnson's motion.
Very good, okay, we have a motion, mother may I, to bring back, okay, the study, okay, bring back to vote again on the gas station selling alcohol, okay, and we motion moved by, okay, Councilman Johnson and the second by Councilman Casiano, and roll call please? So we bring back for discussion and vote.
Councilman Castellanos.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado.
No.
Mayor Wu.
No, and the motion approved three, two, we're going to bring back from, we approve this mother may I and bring back and to discussion and vote, okay, for the gas station selling, okay, the, the alcohol. Okay, and then do we have any other mother may I, anything? Are you sure you don't want another one? You're not right now, you want to say for next time? You two? Okay, and other than that, and, okay, and the city manager, do you have anything to add on?
No, thank you.
Okay, you, okay.
Give a comment.
Okay, comment, go ahead.
I just like to tell, ask the residents, please remain safe and stay out there, you know, wear your mask when you're out and have, you know, you wear a mask to keep other people safe. And to let the residents know if they're not aware, as of today, the city of West Covina have been two thousand one hundred and sixty two residents that have been affected by this COVID, and with, as of today, no, it's twenty, two thousand one hundred and seventy two, with thirty, thirty three deaths, thirty three people have died in the city of West Covina. And the one thing I can say, which is a good sign, it's been going up every day between twenty and thirty people being affected, between yesterday and today, only ten more was affected. So I think it may, may be a turn, so thank you, Ms. Mayor.
I, I want to add on with Councilman Johnson regarding, but I want to say the welcome news regarding our chief bell, okay, he, okay, he, he get, okay, and confirmed, he is one of the number confirmed case, okay, and but, he came back today.
Yes.
He joined our co session meeting, and we want to welcome him. He is like ready to fight for the city and protect and serve, okay, we really, really appreciate he come back to continue to the leader, the leadership, okay, for our proud West Covina Police Department. Okay, yeah, go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Oh, I was just going to say, do you have the facts of how many people actually recovered in West Covina?
No, they don't give you those facts.
But, yeah, I, I know.
We're questionable, most of them have, but it's the idea, but that's how many has been affected.
But I'd like to say that a lot of, a lot of people who were infected with COVID, majority has recovered.
Yes.
So I'm thankful that Chief Bell is, has recovered, he had a, it was a big thing, but I'm glad he's recovered and he's back and he's healthy and be safe.
Okay, okay, our city managers owe our three police department five, okay, how many, how many come back?
All come back.
All come back, okay, I want to thank them, okay, all healthy and they all, they, they safe and continue to serve our city. I want to, again, represent the resident to thank him, thank them, okay, a good job, and we are very happy they healthy and come back to serve. And, okay, go ahead.
The only other thing I'd like to add, thank you all for your comments, and I just want to thank our staff again for the wonderful refinance that occurred of our pension debt. I can't celebrate that enough, and I'll probably bring it up again. Thank you guys so much.
And just quickly to people understand, like people refinance their home right now, so you're thinking about, you have a mortgage, seven percent, now down to, okay, three point seven percent. We almost cut fifty percent of our expenditure, so I think it's a good job for our city management team and the leadership for our city manager. I think this is really helped us a lot. And I think continued the good news and good, okay, our city has been rating, our rating is A plus. Okay, so for people thinking about our city, it's like not that, but we all very confidence, okay, all council member very confidence about our city. So other than that, if you guys don't have any add on, I want to have motion to adjourn. So move, okay, a meeting adjourn, I want to wish everybody have a good night, stay safe. I want to thank you, the staff, city council member and resident and all the people calling. Thank you so much for your participation. Good night.